All right, we'll go ahead and let this go for a little bit to allow people an opportunity to get logged in here. So you, Yessenia, are coming, joining us today from San Jose. Very excited to have you. I'm assuming that you are either taking a break from work or doing whatever, but I appreciate the flexibility that you've provided in your schedule for this opportunity. I think this is going to be a great opportunity for the residents of Pittsburgh to meet candidates who are running for different, different offices within the city of Pittsburgh. So we are today residents of Pittsburgh. We are doing a one-on-one live interview with Yessenia Roman, who is a candidate for Pittsburgh City Council. This is an informal interview. We are going to be covering a couple of topics, but if you're really looking for the meat and the, the, those hard questions, we do have a forum that is coming up later in the month where we are actually going to be asking for your input in developing questions that we will propose to all of the candidates that are running for city council, county supervisor, and Pittsburgh Unified School District Board. So the goal today is to give you an opportunity to get to know the candidate, to hear from him or her, and to just get a feel of where the candidate stands on things and why they are running for office. We will then give you a URL that you can go to where you will be able to submit your questions that we will use in the development of the questions that are asked for our forum later in October, or in September, sorry, in the September. So with that, today, join us from San Jose. We have Yessenia Roman, who is running for Pittsburgh Unified School District as a board trustees member. And with that, Yessenia, I'm gonna go ahead and turn over to you and allow you to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about your background and your history here in Pittsburgh.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Yessenia Roman. I was born and raised in Pittsburgh. My family migrated to Pittsburgh from Peñuelas, Puerto Rico in the early 1950s, mid 1950s, and have remained in Pittsburgh ever since. I graduated class of 1992. I'm a second generation Pittsburgh High School graduate out of three generations in my family and soon to be a fourth. I am a mom of five. I have two children. My oldest son graduated class of 2018 and is now entering his third year at the University of California, Merced, as a cognitive science and psychology major. My daughter, my second born, she's, my daughter, she just graduated last year, 2020, and she is a freshman at San Jose State University as a music and theater major. And I have three more children that are students at Hillview Junior High School and Heights Elementary. I attended Pittsburgh schools throughout my entire life, from head start through 12th grade. Upon graduation from Pittsburgh High School, I attended Los Madanos College where I graduated and then transferred in 1995 to San Francisco State University, where I graduated from there in 1998 with a bachelor's in speech communications with an emphasis in political rhetoric. My dream was to attend law school after college. However, I ended up working for Disability Rights California, which is California's largest nonprofit disability rights legal agency. And I worked there for 17 years after graduation from college. In Pittsburgh, if you ever shopped at the Sal's Clothing Store that is now the Moran, my mom, my mom was very well known. Her name is Socorro. She used to work there in the men's department. And then from there, she worked at Wolf and Yuri. And then she then spent me about 20, 22 years, somewhere around there, working for Burlington Clothing Store over by Target. If you're a member of the Good Shepherd Church and have been for many years or some years, my dad is Jose, the, he was the groundskeeper for a long time at the Good Shepherd Church and maintained the parish hall, et cetera. And so I've been living in Pittsburgh all along. I have kids there now. After college, I'm married. I've been married for 20 years. I came back to Pittsburgh, bought a home, and stayed in Pittsburgh ever since. And so with my schooling, I've already mentioned, my family life, I've already mentioned. I am bilingual, fluently bilingual. I speak English and Spanish. And with that, I'd like to mention a little bit about my community service, because I think it's important for people to know what types of community service I've done. I've worked with the Parents Club at Highlands for several years, Highlands Elementary, when my older two children were there. I worked for, I served on the Parents Club at Hillview also, Hillview Junior High, when my oldest two children were there. And then I also served on the board for the East County Boys and Girls Club, which a lot of people familiar with, towards the ending of their existence, trying to see what can be done as a parent who receives services from that, that organization and trying to keep it open for the children and youth in the city of Pittsburgh. I also taught for several years at my, at my home church, which is the Bay Church. It's on Evora. I worked with Girls Ministries and Early Child Development. And recently, I worked with PACT, the Parent African American Achievement Collaborative Team. I have a real passion for working for children and youth and family. I am in no means a politician. I know they're running for school board. It's a political process to get in there. However, I am in no ways a politician and my, my desire is to serve the community and give back in that way through my experience and knowledge and my skills.
Awesome. Well, you definitely have, you know, with the multi-generation here in Pittsburgh, your kids going through Highlands. I went to Highlands myself in Hillview and then the Pitts. So definitely has spent time at similar schools. One thing that was interesting, just out of my own curiosity, I can deduce what I think it is, but you said your degree was in political rhetoric. What exactly does that cover and what is that?
Well, I'm actually one of the members of the last graduating class from San Francisco State University under that major, as far as I know. What it is, is it's the public speaking side of law, pre-law. So a lot of the courses I took were argumentation and debate. And I actually was a member of the argumentation debating for San Francisco State, my two years there. It's trial and jury. It's dissecting the public speaking side of just law. Cause you can know how to research law. You can know, be trained in how to write, legal briefs and closing arguments and things of that sort. But to be able to be persuasive and get the information you need across is a whole nother genre. And because I enjoy public speaking and I enjoy being in, teaching in workshops, getting information out, being, you know, that one voice in the center of the room. My mentor, who was Olga Renivar, Joe Renivar's wife, she was my public speaking instructor at LMC, and she actually mentored me and kind of reared me into that area of study. So I was, I majored in speech communications with an emphasis in political rhetoric, so.
That's awesome. So kind of jumping around here. So with that degree, do you think that that's going to help you with communicating with the community in regards to school district affairs? If assuming that you are elected, that, that, that is going to be an asset that you can bring to the board, that, that communication piece? I know sometimes one of the frustrations I've had as a parent, and I've heard from others, is that the, the communication between district office and the home site, there, it's not always what parents want or things like that. So you feel that this may be something that you have that will be a value add to the school board?
Most definitely. I like you as a parent. I've been frustrated with the gap in communication. I think when communication is clear and it's transparent, it's out in the open, it makes things a whole lot easier to digest and figure out. It makes things a whole lot easier to manage and handle. And so as a parent, that's what I want. That's what I'm hoping for. There's a lot of things that have, that have happened over years. Cause I've been with the P, Public Pittsburgh Unified School District for years, having multiple children. And I've seen how things have gone developing and changing. But one of the things that have frustrated me is the lack thereof of communication with the parents and the families in the school community, or even listening, lending an ear and hearing what our side is and how we feel and how the decisions you're talking about making or the districts talking about making are going to impact us as, as a family and a school community. But most importantly, the students, because they matter. They matter. And as a parent, having two students that have recently graduated, I'm not talking five or four years. Every year, there's a generational change and I see the gap getting wider and wider. With myself being bilingual and most of our students and families being Latino and speaking that second language, I not only can relate to them linguistically or language wise, but also culturally. I'm able to come down to their level. Through my 17 years with Disability Rights California, my, part of my job was to do trainings and workshops for parents on educational rights issues. And one of the things I, I learned myself through that is that in order for you to be an effective advocate for your child, whatever their needs may be in whatever situation, you have to know, you have to understand what you're dealing with, what the, what your rights are per se, or what the, the best creative way is to deal with that issue. And in most cases, without alienating or, you know, or having a bad rapport with that person, it's being able to talk things out, figure things out, and move forward to, for the best interest of the student. We are families, we are parents, but bottom line is, the kids are the ones that are impacted most. They're impacted if they get the resources and skills that they need to survive as they move up grade by grade and to continue. And to also be successful afterwards, wherever they go, if it's to a college, university, trade school, you know, employment in the workforce, everything that they learn and the skills that we prepare them with in the schools, in the classrooms, that's what carries them through. So it's important for the communication to be clear, for parents to understand why it's important to invest in your child. And I'll stop there because I know as we go on, there'll be more information, so.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, I think the passion that you're, that's behind your answers right now is exactly why we want to do these one-on-one interviews. Cause I know every candidate, and we're going to get to this question about what is your why? Every candidate has a why. Why are you running?
Right.
Because running is not easy. It's not cheap.
It's not.
It's stressful. So you have to have passion to, to want to do that. And you definitely are showing that passion. And that's why we want to do this, because in other formats, it's hard to show your passion as a candidate. And so with that, I've heard, you know, you're passionate around communication, advocacy for students, you know, students with disabilities as well. So Yessenia, what is your why? Why, why are you running for school board? And, you know, what is, what is the, the real number one bucket of passion that's pushing you to do this? Because you, you sound like a very busy lady. You had kids, you got a career, and this takes time. So what is, what is the why for you?
The why for me is, is that, okay, I'm just, I'm not going to try to talk too much. I will put out videos on my own candidacy page if people want to hear my story. But it goes back to my being in high school and what was lacking for me. Years of developing, watching my kids grow and go through the district and realizing that if my child is going to be successful, I cannot put their success in the hands of the school district alone. I have to be an invested parent. I have to walk the walk with my child and guide them. And if I'm talking too loud, please let me know because I get excited about that.
My, my earbud fell out. You're, you're totally fine.
But, and as the years have gone by, I've seen generations changing in terms of students, in terms of what we allow, what we don't allow as parents and as a community to happen in the schools, what the school district allows to happen in the school, what maybe the district office doesn't know is happening in the schools. Looking at teachers, you know, I, I feel that there is no bad teacher. You know how some parents will say there's a, that's a bad teacher, that's awful teacher? I just, I like to say they're not a good fit for the students in our community. Okay? Just to be fair, because I don't want, I can't insult anybody. I can't judge anybody. I'm not an expert in judging teachers. But I do see what goes on in the classroom. I spent many hours just observing for personal interest to see how I can best help my child where they are lacking. Because in a classroom with 30 to 33 kids, and you've got several kids that maybe have other needs or need more one-on-one attention per se, it is difficult for the teacher. And nowadays, because of all the changes that have happened over the years, teachers are, they're, you know, the expectation is, is teachers will, will be babysitters. They'll be, and this is just my personal opinion, and it could be a different situation for every parent. But they're expected in some cases to be babysitters, to be, you know, the parent, to be the psychologist, to be all of these things. Cause kids nowadays have so much need, especially with exposure to social media and just all these things that they're being exposed to at a younger age than when I was in school. Seeing my own children, what would have helped if, if, if it were there and it existed in our schools in Pittsburgh, what would have helped them be successful? Right now, if I had a conversation with my two oldest children, my son would tell me, Mom, I'm sitting in a University of California classroom with kids that have been exposed to coding way earlier than I was. They've seen it for so many years.
Right.
More, more than, than I have. And I find myself trying to catch up. Maybe study skills, you know, if, if my daughter, you know, Mom, you know, they taught us this, but they didn't teach us all these other things. So now I'm finding myself having to fill in the gaps, you know, things of that sort, you know, just seeing. Also talking to my kids, they talk like text. I don't know if any parents have ever had conversations with their kids. It's like the text, the writing, they write with no capital letters or punctuation. And we're like, wait a minute, that's not a sentence. That's just, you know, a bunch of words. So things of that, that is my why.
That's your why?
I want kids to succeed and soar. And in our Pittsburgh schools, we have tons of kids with limitless possibilities, potential, that if we just took the time to step back and look and see, how could I help this child be successful? And in some cases, how could I help this child get out of that situation and change their, their family history and their family cycle? What can I do to help? And that is enough for me. I mean, that's what drives me to run for school board. And like I said, I'm not a politician. I'm an experienced parent. I'm a, a community member that is fully invested in the children and youth in our community.
So with that in mind, I definitely, you explained your why very well, and I think it's crystal clear is that you, you just knowing that the kids of Pittsburgh Unified School District have limitless potential and helping to harness that. Obviously, you're not running for school board. You're not going to be in the classroom. You're not going to be, you know, micromanaging principals or, you know, all of that, that a school board has. So how do you see yourself as a potential school board member? One, working with the other school board members. But two, creating this vision of tapping that limitless potential that our students have at the school board level?
I see myself as holding people accountable. You know, what is our goal? What is our mission? Are we doing, are we doing what we need to do to reach that goal and mission as a board? You know, are we thinking about the students? Or are we just kind of taking the easy road and just what's comfortable?
Yeah.
You know, holding people accountable, making sure that everything is transparent, linking that gap between the parents and the school board. I know in other towns, parents are a lot more active with the school board. When it comes to meetings, you know, there's no place to sit. But in our town, there's a huge gap. And I understand, we're a very diverse town with working parents, you know, low-income parents, monolingual speaking families. So I see myself as, as assisting and supporting with that transparency so that families can get the information that they need and so that we can move together as a community forward to uplift our kids and help them be the best that they can be and accomplish those things that had success. However, that, that student defines it for the older ones who know what success is, but also for the younger ones, being able to succeed academically year after year after year. So it's accountability, it's transparency. And then helping kids be successful. Every kid is a different world. I, I, I feel like our district has always had a one box fits all. And that's not it. That's not it. You know, if we can give tool, kids the tools to be successful and independent and self-sufficient and all of those things, and be able to creatively think about outside the box, to be ethnically aware, very diverse. In the world we live in now, there's so much diversity. And it's important that our students know how to carry themselves and how to understand that people from other ethnic backgrounds and how to embrace that and learn from it. You know, we're creating world changers.
Yeah, absolutely. Then that's, I mean, I graduated in 98, and I think of people that I know that have gone on to accomplish great things. And it's, that's not just the class of 98. I mean, it's, I have a very rich history of, of people who have been catalysts for change.
Right.
And that is something I think that our district takes pride in. And to hear that that's kind of, you know, with the vision that you would like to set at the, the, the board level is, it's nice to hear that. So obviously, the chamber, we're a business organization that we're focusing on supporting and promoting businesses in the city of Pittsburgh. How do you see businesses being able to work with Pittsburgh Unified School District? Or what ideas do you have that, you know, the, as far as the district and the business community working together? Because ultimately, there is a nexus. The business community needs employees, future business leaders, future business owners, innovators. And those come from schools. So how do you see the, the business community of Pittsburgh working with Pittsburgh Unified School District if you were elected to the school board?
I would like to see more exposure to different trades, different types of work, different types of maybe businesses, running a business. One of the things that I had, you know, in, in family conversations with extended family at the dinner table talked about is, you know, I would like to see students exposed to how to run a business. What does it take to run a business? I know that the Small Business Development Center offers a series of courses that prepare people who want to own their own business on how to create a business plan, how to find a location, how to run it, how to market, et cetera. Those types of things, you know, tapping into that, a mentorship program would be awesome for high school students who are thinking already outside the box and have an idea of how they define greatness for them. What would be their dream? Would it be to own your own trucking company? What, what would it be? Everybody has a different definition of greatness. Internships, giving students an opportunity to experience a type of employment setting, obtain skills that will help them once they move forward and maybe even help them define a little bit more what they want to do and point them in the right direction. You know, all of those things are important and everybody has a role in something to give to our students. You know, whether it's time, checking in, you know, mentorship, let me take you under my wing. You know, I'm alumni from this school, whatever it may be. I know that scholarships is always an important thing, you know, if business owners could. Every small little scholarship, I know that there's already local funding that is provided. However, as the generations go and go, they pass by and the cost of secondary education or education after high school, the cost increase, every little bit helps students. You know, so that's kind of how I can see the businesses assisting and supporting our local schools, you know, from the little ones, if it's age appropriate, because we have to remember it has to be age appropriate all the way up. I mean, I remember taking field trips when I was in school. And this last two years, I don't think my children really took any field trips. So for me, learning happens in the classroom and also outside. So it's important to not forget that. And kids learn in different formats, so.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's, it's very true. I think about experiences I've had where I've had moments of learning and a lot of them are out in the real world. And usually it's because I failed at something and, you know, teaching kids to fail forward is, I think, an important thing as well, that that's when you fail, that's when you learn. And, you know, having people that can help you pick yourself up and, you know, move forward. So I'm, it's nice to hear kind of this learning is more than just the eight to three in the classroom. So that's awesome. So with that, is there any particular changes that, you know, you're already thinking about? Like, you know, as a school board, we, the school board in general should be doing X or I would like to, you know, my first hundred days in office or, you know, what are, what are maybe just one thing that's kind of spinning in your head? I know candidates don't want to reveal everything right off the bat because they don't want competitors to maybe, well, that was my idea, or, you know, whose idea. But is there one, one item that you would like to see changed? Assuming that you win a seat and that would be kind of your first, first area of focus as a new, newly appointed, elected school board member?
I would like to see some type of platform set up or some type of, like, for example, a social media page or some type of news outlet or informational outlet where updates are consistently given to parents and information provided. Along with that, workshops to help parents understand how the school works, the district works. You know, right now that they're, that, you know, when a bond comes out, you know, what does that mean? You know, you, you're putting a bond out there.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm one, I can, I can honestly say, because I'm pretty sure there's tons of other parents.
Yes.
Years ago, I voted for the bond for Hillview. My oldest was a sixth or seventh grader at Hillview. Great, a new school. And at that time, I had been working with a program called Rise in Oakland. I was holding workshops for parents on, along with another legal aid attorney on different types of public interest topics like housing, educational rights, benefits like social security, Medicare and Home Support Service, et cetera. Well, at that school, it was a community school. So they actually had a dental office on the campus. It had a doctor's office on the campus. Food bank was there. After-school programming was extended to six, almost seven for families that worked and their kids would literally stay there. And it was just, it seemed like a great community thing. Well, back, taking it back several years, I voted because I wanted to see my kids at a school that was like a community school, but that also had, it was an environment that allowed students to thrive and learn, that they felt comfortable, that it was a, a setting where, one of the things that really bothers me is going to a school and seeing water fountains that are so old, that it's disgusting to even look at. So you look at our new Pittsburgh High School, water stations, all kinds of things. I was hoping that one of my three oldest children would enjoy a Hillview Junior High like that. So yeah, I voted for the bond and a, a lot of people did because it was for the kids.
Right.
Well, here we are, years later, my three oldest children already, my two oldest ones already went through Hillview, Pittsburgh High, and now they're in college. My third child's an eighth grader at Hillview. So had I, had I really focused more on what that meant back then, maybe I could have digested it and understood what the expectation would have been. You know, my expectation would have been different because I paid more attention and understood. And it's those kinds of things that I take accountability for as a parent. But also that I would like to, because of the community that we have now, a lot of non-English speaking, I would like to have a platform to bring that transparency and start working on building a better, stronger relationship between the school district and the parents and families. And maybe that way we'll get the parents, because they understand more. And I'm not saying, you know, every parent doesn't understand. There's a lot of which.
Yeah, there's just, there's just, when you look at all the parents, there's, there's a wide spectrum of people's understanding. And I think for, you use. And I think for, you used bonds as an example. And people think, okay, voted for it, so let's cut the check and start building something or doing something. And they don't realize that there's, there's a, there's a really extensive process with restrictions and a lot of rules.
So just bringing in that gap and beginning clear communication and understanding from the get-go. And it'll also give parents a reason, it, it'll give them more of a push to invest in their child. There's no greater investment you can make than investing in your child.
Absolutely. I, I got six of them I'm investing in, so I definitely, I understand that. And the, I think if anything that viewers of this video, whether watching live now or later down the road, one thing that I'm gathering from this interview, because I've, I've honestly, I've never met you before and that's kind of.
I've seen you though.
Okay, well, I've never, never had a conversation with you. I honestly wish, would have sooner, but one thing that I'm gathering is that you have a, your why, your passion is closing that gap in the, the household's communication and understanding and the district and trying to bring those as close as possible. Is that fair to, to say that that's like your driving force?
That's fair to say. We are Pittsburgh, we are one, we are a community. And we need to fill in those gaps and make our bond tighter.
Absolutely. Well, with that, I know that you're, you're busy and we set a specific time and I don't want to, I deck all the time. I could ask lots of questions and I'm sure people have them. What I want to throw out there, Yessenya's already mentioned that she's going to have posts for videos and different things. Do you have a website or where would people go to learn more about you and your platform?
I have a Facebook page, Yessenya, Yessenya Roman for Board Trustee for Pittsburgh Unified School District. It's a candidate page, a political page. And then I'm also working on a website, Roman for PUSD, because I plan on getting out there and giving back. There's just so many, I've been approached by so many parents and asking, them asking me for help in resolving issues or what are my ideas or how should they approach something? So I, I'd like to continue that and kind of continue the communication and whatnot and, and be an ally, be, you know, a positive in our community, someone who can really kind of bring everyone to the table and bring all the information out and deliver it in a way that everyone understands and is, and it's received well, so.
Good. So, okay, so they can find you on Facebook. You're going to have a website that I'm sure you're going to put that URL out there. Just to remind the public, you can go to Pittsburgh.Vote, so www.pittsburgh.vote, and that is the page where we are putting public information about candidates and different information. We will put, as the URLs come out, we will put that there. But there will also be at the end of today, a form that you can fill out because we are going to have a live candidate form for the different races. And the Pittsburgh Unified School District Board candidates, their form will be Wednesday, September 30th at 7:30 PM. So again, that's Wednesday, September 30th at 7:30 PM. We will be having a live formal forum with all the candidates. But before then, you can fill out the form on Pittsburgh.Vote and you can submit questions for all of the different races. But if there are questions that you would specifically like to ask the candidates, we will put, you can submit those. And as a chamber, we will, you know, group similar questions, get them organized. We will provide them to the candidates before the forum so that they, you know, do come prepared. But during the forum, you will be able to, to view that. So I just want to make sure that everybody knows, again, it's Pittsburgh.Vote. That is a service being provided by the Pittsburgh Chamber of Commerce. And we are covering the city council race, the county superintendent, district five race, and the Pittsburgh Unified School District race as well. So with that, Yessenya, I would like to go ahead and give you the opportunity to provide closing, your closing statement slash argument, since we're going to go back to your, your, your law days. Give us your closing statement and we'll now turn the time over to you.
Our kids matter so, so very much. Every minute, every second that we invest now is going to help them soar higher than you can ever think. Let's give them our time. Let's give them our love, our support. Let's put, invest time into their education. Let's support our schools, our teachers, our Unified School District. And just come together as a community and I would love your vote. On the board right now, I don't see anyone there that has a parent, that has a student that's actually in school. And just always remember, my vote, my vote will not only impact all of you, your children, your families, but they will impact me. And that's what makes the difference for me amongst all of the other candidates. I'm a product of Pittsburgh. I love my hometown. You, if you have a question for me, please feel free to post it. I'm on social media. I will post my answer. I'd like to see the question out there so everyone can see and understand who I am as a candidate. And I want to emphasize, I'm not a politician. I'm doing all of this on my own to be able to give back to my community all of the good things that they have given, not only to myself, but my gen, but the generations in my family. So thank you so much for listening in today. Thank you, Mr. Kroski, for doing this. I really appreciate you from the bottom of my heart and I, I'll see you around, I should say that. And if you see me out on the street, don't, and to the community out there, if you see me out on the street, don't hesitate to stop me and ask me questions. I'm an open book. I'm willing to answer. And I'm good at finding information if it's something I don't know. So just feel free, I'm approachable. Hablo español para ustedes que tengan preguntas y quieren saber sobre lo que mi plan es como candidata para la junta escolar del distrito unificado de Pittsburgh. Soy un libro abierto, pueden hablar conmigo. Que Dios le bendiga. God bless everyone.
All right. Well, thank you everyone and we will see everybody at our next one-on-one.
Thank you so much. Have a great day everyone. Stay safe.